Good morning. Calling to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 2nd. Would those who care to please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is public comment number one. This is a time for anyone to comment on something on the agenda, especially if you're not going to be able to stay or anything else that's on your mind. I see no one coming up to the front, so we'll move on. And we have a couple of proclamations. I don't see Ann Owens here from the Volunteer Center. So we're going to go on and we'll go down to the second proclamation. LeAnn Harder, could you come up, please? I believe that you probably have that proclamation. And this is a proclamation recognizing April 2019 as National County Government Month. Good morning.
Would you like me to read the proclamation?
Yes, please. Just not the "we supervisor," the supervisor's part will check.
Okay. Proclamation regarding National County Government Month for April of 2019 entitled[106.78][106.78]"Connecting the Unconnected." Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 300 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant... I think it should be counties. And whereas counties provide health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Story County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas through the National Association of Counties, President Greg Cox's Connecting the Unconnected initiative, NACO is demonstrating how counties deliver people-centered services to our residents nationwide. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services.
Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Board, any comments?
I approve.
Second. Thank you. All right. Thank you, LeAnn, for coordinating this for us. And I then move in... Yes, Sanders?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Kind of went backwards there, didn't it? All right. So it's approved. LeAnn, what were you going to do? Were you thinking about doing a photo or doing that afterwards or right now?
We can do a photo afterwards.
Okay.
What we're going... Our plan is this year, we have a series of about 10 tweets that we'll have go out starting this week, just talking about county government in general. They're actually supplied by NACO and then we can enhance them on our end. Also, we will be recognizing... The board will be recognizing this in a year at the end of this month. And then we have some opportunities to partner with local school districts, starting with Nevada Community School District. The Box City Event Kickoff will be the latter part of this month. So we'll share the I-Civics and County Matters curriculum with them as part of the overall presentation.
Thank you.
And so different touches in different ways.
All right. Great.
We just all do?
No, it's next week, 15 through... Volunteer Week is coming up, but Ann Owens isn't here.
Just that we had the proclamation on the agenda. I just wanted to know.
Oh, I thought we'd wait to see if Ann shows up to do the proclamation with her.
Okay.
But so thank you very much, LeAnn. Appreciate your work. So we're going to go ahead and once again, since Ann's not here, we'll drop down to the Access Report. Any report? Welcome, Tess.
Morning, and thank you for making some time. I never know how close to like sit to the mic, so if I fade out, like nod or something.
We're going to ask close right now.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, sorry. No, it's all good. All right. So thank you again for your ongoing support. I'm here to provide a report from Access. So I think you should all now have a paper copy. This year's been a busy year with increased client needs and working through transition and agency stability. I'm here again to talk a little bit about FY18, so a little bit removed at this point. We're quite a ways into FY19, but also some progress around our current year. One thing that I want to just highlight is that our direct support services to survivors of sexual abuse, domestic abuse, and housing programs have continued to grow. In that FY18 fiscal year, we served more clients than the agency has served in recent years. We served a total of 1,742 unduplicated victims of abuse. That included 794 survivors from Story County and 129 from Iowa State University. I thought it would be helpful, a little context for that. In past years, we've been much more around that 1,400 mark. So for us, it's about a 20% increase. That in the moment of significant agency transition, being directorless for a portion of the year, having some staff turnover, it was quite a busy year. So I did want to highlight though that I think that our services have continued to be strong. Some results from our client feedback survey have shown that our services really are about stabilizing the experiences of survivors. Our crisis response survey, over 70% of participants were able to identify more ways to plan for their safety and more community resources. Those are two national indicators when put in combination of positive outcomes, increased resiliency, all related to victims of violence. I did include in my report a little side note, over 20%, just decided not to answer the question. So we feel pretty good about the 70%, knowing that most people... Most of the rest were made up of people not answering. I know that's a personal goal of mine, is to do more surveying of clients, to improve some of that. We're currently exploring some other options about offering us a percentage of our clients one-on-one interviews so we can gather additional feedback. So trying to think outside the box because we understand limits around surveys, but we are feeling like those are some positive indicators around our services. So last time Access presented, we reported some positive impacts of our housing model change. You might remember that's when we shifted a couple of years ago to scattered site shelter. We continue to see positive results for our clients. One challenge I wanted to make the board aware of over this last year has been staff turnover in that particular department. This past fall, we had three of our housing advocate positions turn over. And so there was a period of time where we just... We needed to, for the safety of our clients and for the well-being of our staff, kind of reduce the number of clients we could safely house and kind of hold some of our beds vacant around October, November. We made sure that everybody who requested shelter still had their needs met, so that was referrals to ERP or other regional shelters such as up in Fort Dodge or down in Des Moines. So we worked hard to make sure that people still had their needs met. Unfortunately, it meant a little bit of creative thinking during that time. Something that happened in that same time period was we shifted away from having something called a nighttime shelter advocate. It was a part-time position for us, and when we started to look at our budget, we realized that that position cost the agency about the same as what a full-time staff member would cost the agency. And recognizing that some of the turnover in that staff had to do with frequency of on-call, level of client load, we realized shifting that to a full-time position that could share on-call, share client load, might help address some of those burnout concerns. So in the midst of this big turnover, we made this kind of bold decision to also change how that was staffed. So we are optimistic that that will help, again, continue to stabilize that program in the long term. Whoop, flipping my page. So beginning in December, we have actually, again, we're back to full staff, and we have seen our beds and services again return to the levels we would expect, serving between 18 and 30 clients per month. That's in line with our beds that we have available, but it's also in line with just kind of that variance has to do with how fast somebody moves in and out of shelter. So what we're seeing again is that when we're full staffed, that model really is working for folks. And so we're feeling like there's a lot of good potential happening there now that we're back to full staff. The other thing I want to highlight is that in January, we received a new kind of pool of funds from the state around homelessness prevention dollars. So those are funds to help somebody stop coming into shelter. It's really to say, how can we quickly prevent an eviction, do some of those things that would help somebody not become homeless? So we're excited about unrolling that program this spring. Well, it's already enrolled. We're going with it. The other thing I wanted to highlight for you is some of the successes on our sexual abuse team, especially around their community education initiatives. A big priority for that team has been increasing the numbers of individual reach with programming, but reducing the staff hours that it takes to do that kind of community education. And the big model that we have been pushing is a train-the-trainer model. So it's one where we encourage volunteers to come in and be trained in a specific program and then be the champions for that with some technical assistance from us. So a big example of that for us is a program called Building Up Brothers. It's a program where we train fraternity members to present to their chapter members. And for us, that's a big deal because it allows us to reach hundreds of fraternity members at Iowa State with multiple sessions. Multiple sessions is critical to when we really start talking about building education and setting that foundation in place. So we're really excited about that program. The other highlight from the sexual abuse team is it's timely. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month nationally, and so you might start to see this month as you go around the county, a variety of different things happening in some salons and some coffee shops. So be on the lookout for some of their campaign initiatives. Whew, I apparently decided to pack a ton in here, so quick breath.
You're doing a good job, though, of kind of, you know, condensing it, so thanks.
Drying hard. So I also wanted to report about our homicide and other violent crime program. Well, that's not a Story County-funded program. It's absolutely a service we provide here. So I thought it would be helpful to give an update, especially since that program for us has significantly grown. It's one of our newer programs. It's existed for... We're in the third year of a three-year grant, so it's pretty new for us. And what we have seen is it went from, you know, that first year was really a building year, to around 80 some clients, and less last year, serving 141 unduplicated clients from Story, Marshall, and Boone County. Again, it's a new service for us, and it's only funded with one advocate historically. That's a really big client load for one person. And so kind of recognizing that large volume and needing to kind of manage, not wanting to burn staff out, wanting to provide high-quality services for the folks we do serve, we've really kind of focused on two strategies in this last year or this current fiscal year. One has been really focusing our outreach on the criminal justice system and not necessarily prioritizing it in other places. I'll talk in a moment about why that's not a long-term strategy for us. It's not a great strategy. It's a current survival strategy. But then also, of course, seeking additional funds for an additional advocate. Wanted to give you an update that this winter, we secured some funds, a one-time funding source for a short-term period of time for a second advocate's time. We hired that person in February and already are seeing that as a real positive. We continue to seek long-term support for that position. We have some applications into the state and we're keeping our fingers crossed. So hopefully, when you see me next year, you'll hear about that being sustained. Why I wanted to highlight why that criminal justice priority is not necessarily a long-term strategy, one, I know it's not a best practice. In our other service areas, let's start our domestic abuse program, our sexual abuse program, the vast majority of the people we serve are actually not involved in the criminal justice system initially. They're calling with safety planning concerns, troubleshooting concerns. And so they're seeking other wraparound support services, not necessarily about a police report. Sometimes our services help them decide to make that police report. We would like to see that for our homicide and other violent crime program. When I think about folks who've experienced willful injury and some of these other crimes, absolutely they've had scary things happening, and sometimes they don't always fully recognize that it's a crime. And so just like with those other services, sometimes they need support to get to that place. So we know, we are recognizing that survivors in this program, of course, would be safer. The county would be more resilient as we start to make sure we're reaching people who are not involved in the criminal justice system. So it's a goal of ours, long-term. I think for us, it's just, again, recognizing new program building. We need to get kind of our staff and volunteer pool built up to help make that a reality. So hopefully, in the coming years, you'll hear about more outreach from that particular program. We're just in capacity-building phase at this point. Wanted to share a little bit about an agency-level efforts to continue to stabilize. Again, recognizing we've gone through many transitions in recent years. Our Board of Supervisors, or our Board of Directors and agency leadership has gone through a strategic planning process. I included in my report some of the big priority goals that they have set. They included, they kind of have three zones. One is around reducing staff burnout and turnover. That's something, again, as I mentioned, we've experienced quite a bit of in the last year. Another area is really looking at our services critically and saying, where do we have our greatest impact and how do we prioritize those as the place we put our staff time? And then the final one is to do with fundraising. You know, most nonprofits are going to end with that one, right? So speaking of fundraising, we have, again, partnered this year with ERP and YSS to hold the Third Annual Reggie Sleepout. It's coming April 26th. We're feeling very optimistic and really grateful, I got to say, at having how cold it's been. Real glad we pushed that back a month, knowing that last year we had to cancel the event due to snow. So currently, you know, we're in that big push right now for that event. We have 2016's registered, 18% of our fundraiser goal. This is the critical time. This is exactly how it went in past years. The last three, four weeks are where all the magic happens. So we're getting excited. We hope others will be excited with this and help make that event a success. So final conclusion has to do with our expenditure of Story County funds. I included in here, and most of the program categories, we have already claimed out. Of Story County funds, there's two remaining. One is battering crisis intervention, and then the other is public education awareness. We believe we're on track to continue to claim out those and will have no problem, especially thinking of April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I know that we have a ton of public education planned, so have no concerns related to that as we enter into the last months of the fiscal year. So that's my speed report and talk. I wanted to just thank you all for your continued support of our services and to survivors in this community. And again, thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
Outstanding.
Board?
Tess, thank you. So the services that Access provides are so vital and make our community better, but going through the transitions that you guys have gone through, not only in structure but in leadership, it's amazing what you guys have been able to accomplish. And thank you for all the hard work I know you're putting in.
Thank you. We're going to back up now a bit on the agenda, and Ann Owens is here. Now, Ann, we have the proclamation, and we have your report. So we can go ahead and do your report first.
My apologies for being late. I'm in the midst of looking to see 300 members of the street community today in various projects, and as an only person shocked, I'm quite a master of cloning.
Okay, that's great. Well, welcome. It's fine. And we'll start with your report, and we'll finish up with the proclamation and get a photo.
My report, again, is much briefer and probably will be as fast as Tess's because of nerves, but much briefer because I managed to leave my notes in the bottom of my project bag at Iowa State. So we'll see how much I remember. So I'll be up at 6:00 this morning to get that ready. Thank you very much for your continued support of the Volunteer Center of Story County. We continue to see a growing number and are on track to place, to make 2,000 new volunteer referrals to opportunities with agencies, groups, and organizations in our community this year. It is a little harder for me to distinguish duplicated versus unduplicated because the normal, the average response is to three to five opportunities when someone is looking for something to volunteer in our system. So duplication is a little hard because people, when they look to volunteer, often don't know exactly what they're looking for and want to look at multiple options before they decide. And then they go out to another agency, to another opportunity, and I don't necessarily know which of those five they stuck with, but they know there are five opportunities out there, which I think, we feel at the Volunteer Center is just as important as finding that one that speaks to their level of how they want to be involved in the community. We continue, our main service continues to be the online referral site that serves 190 active agencies, have accounts in that system with contact information as well as posted opportunities. We are up to an average of 85 opportunities a month posted in our system, ranging from one-and-done events on one day, come in, do a project, and go to the ongoing opportunities of mentoring, meal delivery, even board service. Some of our partner agencies are recruiting their board members and putting that need out there as well. So there's a variety of skill-based volunteering, general skills, social, technical. They run the gamut of causes, from veterans to housing to education to hunger to food preparation, really. And we're very excited. The system developers have been working very hard this year, and a lot of new features have come out in our system. Sometime during this month and between 15 different events on the calendar, we will be learning about to help people better fine-tune our website, make it more organized and user-friendly, to help drill people down into the opportunities that will speak to them instead of getting overwhelmed with 80 opportunities to search through. We continue to support youth volunteering. At the end of the month, on April 25th, we will again present the Story County Youth Volunteer Awards. We've received 10 outstanding nominations of young people who have done service. And again, this year, the majority of those nominations are not from... How do I want to say this? They're nominated by other agencies and community members in the community, but not for structured volunteer opportunities necessarily in that organization. They're nominated for their level of service by finding a need, figuring out a way to address it, and creating the means to address it themselves. So again, this year, I'm very excited will be a testament to the creativity of young people and their ability and their desire to contribute to the world and be engaged in their community and make a difference. So I expect it to be a very inspiring evening. We continue to do our days of service. This Saturday is Stash the Trash, which we have been doing since 2001, a community cleanup to pick up the trash. We are already, over 200 people have signed up for Stash the Trash to come out. And we anticipate at least, between looking at how people responded as individuals instead of as a team, but told us they're bringing a team in the lunch question, we're anticipating 300 or more people to come out for Stash the Trash this year. Along with that, Martin Luther King Junior Day, we switched away from doing projects and did a three-month series of community conversations on different issues, focusing ultimately on civic engagement and opportunity. It was very well-received, and we are already underway to make plans to continue that. Attendance was small this year because we did it in the morning, and as Tess said, the January, February months were not... It was hard to get up that early in the morning on some of those days. So, but we intend to continue that community conversation type of projects to inspire engagement to that level, too. With Martin Luther King Junior Day, Family Volunteer Day, our second longest-running day of service, again mobilized 50 individuals, about 20 different families to come out and volunteer before the holidays. We're very excited about that. We continue to work in collaborations. We're supporting the summer learning volunteer planning and recruitment. The website will be live sometime this week, but it's already being out there and distributed, looking for volunteers, all total between the four school-based sites as well as the other community partners that are part of that collaboration with their summer needs. Will be somewhere between 300 and 500 volunteers needed for summer programs on a variety of locations and purposes related to summer learning, literacy, and access to meals during that time. But we're very happy to provide that umbrella infrastructure as a one-stop shop for people to find all of those opportunities. And then we're also working, the Reggie Sleepout collaboration was using our system, and we've been helping them plan their opportunities, get them written up, and they'll be using our system again. Our biggest, one of our biggest accomplishments this year, although not necessarily funded by the county or Story City, we were the volunteer coordination for RIGBRI that just came through. So that 600 to 1,000 volunteers depending, 600 came through our system, 1,000 volunteers came out in total. So that was just a small group of people for my one-stop, one-staff shop to stay on top of last summer, which was a little thrilling at times. We are very excited. We just completed our second Service Enterprise cohort of training, which is an organizational process. We coach and consult with agencies to go through to look at how their culture of, their current culture of volunteer engagement impacts the volunteer experience and the impact they have as an agency. And we work with them to be more strategic and identify other areas, greater opportunity for more meaningful, more strategic, more holistic engagement in the organization, to have a greater impacted capacity with their volunteers. And we just completed our second cohort with Ryman Gardens last fall, and they already have their site visit scheduled for national certification at the end of next week. So we're very excited about that, and we have three agencies and hope to have a fourth committed to our spring cohort coming up this summer. Impact-wise, I've given you some of our numbers. The last number I will leave you with is that we still generate a $5.51 return for every dollar and every volunteer hour invested in the Volunteer Center back to the community. So we're very pleased with that impact. And thank you again for your support.
Nice returns. Thank you. Board?
Thank you very much.
I do have one question. Ann, it's related to when really big events come to town. Do most of them run through you, say Special Olympics or Iowa Summer Games? Or do they have their own volunteer setup?
The answer is it depends.
Okay.
They have accounts in our system. Depending on the local volunteer leadership supporting those efforts, will try to use us. The majority of the 190 agencies have a dedicated staff person with at least part of their job responsibilities as a volunteer coordinator. So when you get to like Special Olympics or Iowa Games, they have dedicated staff, and they have their own system and their own processes that they want to use. They will reach out to us, and we will help promote it, but they don't necess... The bigger ones don't necessarily use our system to do it, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
So, but like RIGBRI isn't... Special Olympics and Iowa Games are a set structure and a set organization. RIGBRI is much more nebulous. So an event like RIGBRI or community celebrations, street fairs, and those sorts of things tend to come through us more because we have that capacity to build that.
Okay. Thank you. So let's do the proclamation, all right? You can go ahead and sit right there until we're done, and then we'll come up to the front and smile.
Okay. That's all I want.
Whereas, the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. And whereas, volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, laying the foundation for tomorrow's growth and prosperity. And whereas, individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas, during this month all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas, the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas, experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems. And whereas, our county's volunteer force of over 63 million is a great treasure. And whereas, volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. And now therefore, we, the Story County Supervisors in Story County, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 15th to the 21st of 2019 as National Volunteer Week. In Story County, by volunteering, recognizing those who serve, we can replace disconnection with understanding and compassion. Signed this second day of April 2019, as soon as we go ahead and get a motion and a second and a vote. So.
I would move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now let's go ahead and stand up here, and we'll take a quick photo. Now let's go ahead and stand up here, and we'll take a quick photo and.
Dan is married to my cousin. So what does that make us, that you're cousins?
Ametism.
Okay, no, that's, that's right. I'm married, so technically I'm in love.
There we go.
Isn't when you have a loss? Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Apologies for being.
No problem. Good luck with the rest of the day.
Thank you. Tess, it's National.
It's National, oh, where is it? We should, I will get on my stuff, they should put in for proclamation.
Okay, all right. You want to bring that back, since we're just at the beginning of the month, and then we can do it maybe next week.
On it.
We'll do that. You want to do that? Is that my view? Thank you.
Sure.
All right. We're going to move on now to consideration of the amendments from last week.
I move approval.
Second.
Hey, Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of claims?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of claims?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of claims?
Move approval.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
We're at the consent agenda, and I'd like to pull item number, let's see, what do we got here? Looks like it's 13, just to make a couple of comments on that. So can I have a motion?
Move approval, pulling 13.
Second.
You, Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Item number 13 is consideration of the appointment of Cheryl Moss to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy effective April 2nd, 19, 2019 to December 31, 2020. And I'd just like to note that I'm pleased to put forward Cheryl Moss's name into consideration today. When I took a look at all of the requirements, I was interested in, in filling this position. I made note of a couple of the characteristics from the person who was leading the position, one of them being rural resident, not within city limits. And Ms. Moss fits that. She's lived in the county on an acreage for 30 years. In addition to that, I wanted someone who was interested in and understood rural problems, agricultural to a bit, and also understood about how places in the urban fringe could be impacted differently than out in the entire incorporated area. And Ms. Moss fits all of those. I also liked what she had to say about service and serving on the commission, in that she didn't come into at least the interview or what she wrote on her application with any preconceived notions. And then finally, I liked her background in that being a teacher, she has long been able to interact with a variety of people, from parents and members of the community to the small ones. And also that she had a diversity of approaches into her listening skills before she made a decision. So if that's agreeable with everybody, I take a motion, please.
Yeah, so, so I, yeah, so I'll have a comment, but I'll start by making a motion. I think Cheryl is going to be an outstanding member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I move her appointment to fill a vacancy.
I would second the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of comments. I want to thank Ethan, our county attorney's office. I'm so appreciative that this board had enough foresight to pull this from last week's agenda and give the county attorney's office some time to review, to make sure that in our process we went about it the right way, and we didn't get ourselves in, out over our skis at all. And then the second thing I wanted to say, and I said this to you in passing in the hallway back there, but this is one of the reasons that I feel it's so important that you, as chair, include one of our staff members in these interviews, so that we don't have any of this nebulous confusion about what happened. All, none of that should reflect on Cheryl. I think she's going to be outstanding, and, and I'm excited to vote for her, but I did want to make those two points.
Thank you. I think they're great points to follow through it and look in the future. Thank you.
Supervisor Merkin, anything?
No.
Okay. So now I'll take the roll call. Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We have no public hearing items today, so now, next, we're going to call on Joby Brogdon, and we're going to discuss and consider some concrete for the animal control makeover or remodel.
Remodel.
Yeah, remodel there. So why don't you tell us what's going on, please, Joby?
All right. Well, you know, out there we've got a mud issue, but during the remodel on the south side of the building, we added outswinging ingress doors to get out of the building. Well, currently, there's gravel on, in front of some of them, and some old blacktop in front of the other one. So this is just to add some concrete pads and footing, so that we don't have frost picking them up and blocking the doors when you try to exit in the winter time. And then a sidewalk along the side there, just to, so you don't have to walk through the mud when it's raining. And then on the front side of the building, where we added the outdoor kennels, we noticed that right inside the gates, when the ground is wet and soft, the animals tend to jump at the gate, will create big mud holes. So just going to put a small concrete pad right inside those two gates.
Thank you. I was out there just yesterday and saw a couple of those items.
Yeah.
Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, part of what we need to do, I move approval of the unbudgeted $58, $150 for the concrete.
That's second.
No further discussion or questions. Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thank you, Joby.
Thank you.
And it literally looks good out there. I just.
Yeah, it's going along. We're getting real close. We're doing the final walkthrough this week.
I'm just impressed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is discussion and consideration of Resolution 19-96 Sabers Residential Parcel Subdivision. Welcome Emily for your, one of your last few days.
Yeah, I'm not sure I want to hear from Emily. I'm not very active with Emily right now.
Emily's leaving us in a couple of weeks, so.
Congratulations, Emily.
Yes, congratulations here. We'll get positive for you, all right? Even though it's a lot to us. Go ahead.
Okay. This is here. We have residential parcel subdivision request before you today. It is the Sabers Residential Parcel Subdivision. Can you use the microphone closer? Yep. Okay, so the applicant today is Joseph and Mary Ellen Haas Sabers. The property owner is the same. Property is located on 560th Avenue outside of the city of Ames in Grant Township. The districts associated with this subdivision are the Ballard School District, the Mary Greeley Ambulance, Beta Fire, Consumers Energy, Xenia Rural Water, and the Walnut Creek Watershed. So this is a simple division, dividing the lot once into two, to create Lot 1, which will be a 7.5 net acre lot, which will contain the existing single-family dwelling and accessory structure. And then proposed Lot 2 will be a 36.92 net acre lot, considered buildable for a single-family dwelling. Both lots will have frontage on 560th Avenue, and the two lots are planned to be sold to separate buyers. Proposed Lot 2 is a large lot with a farm ground currently, and that is proposed to be farmed in the, in the near future. The future buyer is looking to farm, continue to farm it. So here's the proposed division, the plat. Again, the proposed Lot 1 in the southwest corner of the property. Just a little background on the history of this parcel. Prior to 2019, it was in the original quarter-quarter configuration. Earlier this year, the north 50 feet were, was divided from the quarter-quarter through a plat of survey. The purpose of this was to provide access to properties to the east of, of the subject property, I guess. The person that's anticipated to purchase that 50-foot strip along the north side of the property is also interested in acquiring one of the parcels to the east. The existing single-family dwelling located on proposed Lot 1 was constructed in 1981 in addition to a steel utility building, and then two lean-tos that were added to that structure. Proposed Lot 2, again, currently in agriculture and proposed to be, continue to be farmed. So the subject property is located in the southwest, the very far southwest corner of Grant Township. It's about two, two miles southeast of the city of Ames. Let's see, there are 14 parcels within a half mile that, including the subject property, that contain a single-family dwelling. Additionally, 25 parcels do meet the 35-acre minimum in the A1 district to be buildable for a single-family dwelling. There are four existing dwellings within a quarter-mile of the proposed subdivision. All adjacent properties are zoned A1 agricultural and are in row crop production. There is a wooded area to the east, as you can see on the screen there, and that kind of creates a, a natural buffer from the subject property and I-35 there. So the future land use designation of this property is agriculture conservation area. Through this residential parcel subdivision process, however, only one additional single-family dwelling will be permitted to be constructed. Some site photos here. This is looking northeast at proposed Lot 1 with the existing single-family dwelling. This is looking at the existing access. Says looking northeast across proposed Lot 2, and then looking southeast at proposed Lot 2. Lot 1 is located on the right hand of the screen there, by the tree area. Says looking east along that 50-foot wide parcel E that was just divided off earlier this year, and then looking north along 560th Avenue, and looking west across 560th Avenue, and then looking south on 560th, again, toward proposed Lot 1. So all of the applicable land development regulations and the requirements for the residential parcel subdivision have been met for this proposal. In terms of comments from the interagency review team, I just want to highlight the assessor's comments, which is that after the sale of the dwelling on proposed Lot 1, the assessment classification will change from agricultural to residential. Proposed Lot 2 will continue to be assessed agricultural. Even if a single-family dwelling is constructed, there's still so much ag ground there that the assessor's office did indicate that would continue to be assessed ag. We did send letters to surrounding property owners within a quarter-mile. We have not received any comments. And then just a few points of analysis. All of the requirements for the residential parcel subdivision plat have been met. Both lots have frontage. Again, proposed Lot 2 is considered by, or buildable and could be sold in the future for a buildable lot, but at this, at this time, the proposed use will be, continue to be farming. There are 14 single-family dwellings within a half mile, and four existing dwellings within a quarter-mile of the proposed subdivision. So it is Planning and Development staff's recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve Resolution 1996, the residential parcel subdivision plat Sabers subdivision, as put forth in SUB 0219. Any questions?
I'll turn to the board if there are any questions here.
I have none. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, to me, that is a simple one, and I move approval of Resolution 1996.
Second.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. They'll enjoy their new neighbors, I'm sure, so. I'm going to invite Leon Harder back up for the discussion and consideration of amendments to the Story County Iowa Economic Development Process and Policies. We discussed this last week.
Almost at the chair today. Yes, that's discussed last week. I'm back today with the proposed changes. They're identified on the draft through strikeouts for language to be removed in, in color, red font, and then underlined. It's, the date's on the top, obviously, and then adding criteria E under eligibility, item number three. Clarifying the language in item number four, based on the discussion last week, and then changing the pre-application conference deadlines under the project process. Are there any questions?
I just have one question. With the changes that we're making, adding housing development rehab and/or conversion, but then in the next section saying that no tax equipment rebate to grants, loans, or assistance would go to private business, how would we conceive that some housing development would take place?
It would be running through the cities or entity that would qualify would be the applicant.
So they could, they, the entity could do that.
Right.
It's just the county would not do it directly. It's a pass-through. Okay, thank you.
We good?
We're good.
I move approval of tip policy with the noted changes.
Second.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thank you, Leon.
Go ahead.
We're going to invite Jerry Moore up now, Director of Planning and Development, and we'll hear a quarterly report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This first slide is of the zoning permits for the first quarter. Before I start, I want to thank Amelia for the work that she did in putting this together. She always does a great job, and it's greatly appreciated. This showed you the last four years, first quarter. We're down a little bit, but when we were putting this together, we actually had four permits for single-family dwellings that are not a part of this, and then four accessory structure permits that included solar array projects. So I, I think we're going to surpass the first quarter for 2018. Average construction value is up a little bit from the last two previous first quarters to $222,000. This is the distribution map, shows you where the activity is. It's nice to see improvements east of Kelly, north of Huxley, Cambridge, and Maxwell, as what is usually shown is some growth west, northwest, and north of Ames and near Gilbert. Development cases are down. We had nine cases, but I can tell you the activity level, since the snow melted, is picked up.
I would imagine, yeah.
Over the last few weeks, we've got a lot of inquiries in, property research requests, complaints. We're working pretty hard on work program things. But what you see is three subdivisions, two variance requests, conditional use permit, a vacation request at 199th Street, and a site development plan, and one rezoning. First quarter, again, these are the things that we worked on. First net FTC tower company obtained approval from the Board of Adjustment. It's a tower, communication tower east of Zering. It's to provide services, it's a statewide system. If there's a, an emergency or disaster, emergency response personnel have first access to the use of the, of the tower, and it's capable of handling a lot more than just voice communication, the data. You can do like videos and, and high-volume communications through it. So that was an exciting project. It's also a part of AT&amp;T's improvement, and it's co-locatable, so two additional carriers can co-locate on it. It's a 195-foot-high tower. We also had two residential parcel subdivisions, one ag subdivision. Mr. Miranowski rezoning and variance request. Mr. Marinowski rezoning and variance request, that was south of Story City. He grows grapes, also works with a third party to process his grapes, so he obtained a rezoning and a variance. Mr. Wiggers' variance appeal was denied by the Board of Adjustment. We've been in contact with an attorney who is working for Mr. Wiggers. They're interested in doing a, proposing a text amendment and possible rezoning, but this property is in the Ames infringe, so it will involve Ames and Gilbert to request this as well. 199th Street Vacation, that was Mr. Corey who was in. It started with his interest in acquiring some land, actually it's his son's property. They were interested in acquiring some land adjacent to their property, and we looked at the right-of-way and saw this as an opportunity to make some adjustments. Again, it was an R1 district, and it's important that the existing parcels don't fall below the minimum lot size, so that was a part of it. Key co-op, there was a site plan that was approved by the Board of Supervisors. They added some grain storage facilities, and as I mentioned, I think before, we've received a lot of conditional use permit insignificant modifications, which are reviewed administratively. So, it's good to see that, you know, these existing systems are getting upgraded. So, if you have a cellphone, which most of us do, we're seeing the benefit of that, or we're going to see the benefit of it. We had an open house for home businesses. It wasn't really well-attended, but I can tell you the people that were here were pretty interested in learning about the requirements, and we've had some ongoing dialogue after that meeting, but it's the first session of the outreach that we're trying to do to communicate to the general public the things that we've been working on, the things that the Board of Supervisors has supported. First quarter, these are some things that we're currently working on. Conditional use permit Hickory Grove Park Beach House. It's to replace the existing beach house that's on the east side of the lake. That's going to be before the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow, and then Board of Adjustment this month. Mr. Wilker submitted a rezoning and minor subdivision for 560th Avenue and 300th Street. That's northeast of Huxley. It'll be a four-lot subdivision rezoning request. That one will be before the Board of Supervisors. Two residential parcel subdivisions, and believe it or not, we have not one, but we have two special events, which is kind of exciting to review. The first one's a triathlon. I think there's been a lot of discussion already with the race coordinator in the city of Ames, streets, police department, parks and rec. I think there's been some discussion with the sheriff's office, engineering, secondary roads, because part of this race will include a bike race in the county, the county's involved. So, we're hosting a meeting on Thursday at 3:00. We're trying to bring in all the departments, all the entities involved, and just going through, you know, what's already been discussed and planned, and just try to work on the coordination between the different jurisdictions and departments. And then Crush Rock Classic, Scott Wall, is the race coordinator for this. This is a proposed bike race, and May 18th is the planned date. This one's to be, this is in the unincorporated area of the county, and so we're working with Ames, or excuse me, Gilbert Fire Department. We communicated with the city of Gilbert. It's also a joint, the jurisdiction is divided with Nevada Fire Department, so we've communicated with them, and then also the participants identified in the ordinance, the emergency management coordinator, environmental health, engineering, secondary roads, all the other participants. And so, that meeting will be tomorrow at 2:00 to talk about that.
Jerry, I have a question for you about the neighbor ride, Nevada's annual bike ride. Does any of that come into the county, or is it so insignificant that Nevada just handles it all?
I don't know anything about that. I think with our ordinance, if it goes into the unincorporated area and if it involves more than 250 people, and it's an event that lasts more than four hours, you know, it's something that we should probably be involved in.
Okay. Shelley, you said it is all within the community?
It's all in Story County. They start from Nevada and go around and loop back into Nevada, so I don't think they've ever had 250 participants.
Okay.
But she has the utter...
Deb has that, okay, good.
Okay, yeah, I can communicate with them. Yeah, it's participants, volunteers, spectators total, but we'd be happy to reach out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Get a dialogue going. First quarter complaints, non-compliance issues, update Crestview Mobile Home Park is on top of the list. We, our department sent the property owner, Brad Lammer, a letter in December asking for voluntary compliance and removal of three mobile homes. There was, I think, over 10 garden sheds, debris primarily on the north end of the park, a lot of recycled materials. He's trying to save solids, you know, material that can be saved, metal, block material, quite a few semi-trucks, semi-trailers, trucks, vans, RV. He did come in and apply for a permit for the hoop building. We're reviewing that again. We had, we ended up denying it because we didn't get a response to the questions, but I can tell you there was a for-sell sign on the property. He is selling the property, and he did remove like five sheds. He's done some processing of the recycled material. There were some trees that were in the way from when they were removing mobile homes, and so he started to process some of that stuff. But the way we left it was, I requested a compliance schedule this week and then used that as a basis to go forward, but the message was that, you know, this is the home stretch. He's done a lot of work, and there's a little bit of work to be done yet, so, again, that's why. Do you have any questions about anything that I said on that?
Just, are you guys still scheduled to present down at the Iowa Public Health Department meeting, state meeting?
Yeah, that won't involve me. I think Margaret's involved in that.
Oh, but you're not going now?
Ball, 170th Street, that was a complaint that we received right before the winter. There's vehicles, appliances, trailers, junk, salvage material, mobile home. We sent them a letter. They did contact us. We were to, they were to get back to us on a day and time that would work for a site review, and we never heard back, so we're going to follow up with them on that one. Keppert was a complaint. Property owner on 280th Street is, had converted their dwelling into two dwelling units, and so we sent them a letter. We're going to, we plan to meet with them on-site. Diburkey Auto Body and Parts came through on a home business renewal. We sent them a letter, and they've indicated primarily that what we're dealing with there is junk and salvage, and they're going to clean up by the end of the spring. Premier Fitness on West Lincoln Way, it came to our attention when we were doing a sign permit review for another business in that commercial node there. They had several signs in the road right-of-way, and we looked at our records and learned that we didn't have any permits, and so we've had some communication with them to submit the sign permit and comply with the county's ordinance. PSA Home Business, Emily and I met with those folks. They have outside storage, business operation in more than one building, more employees than what they're permitted. They intend to stay on that site. They're just south of the Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park, and so likely what we're going to see there is probably a request to rezone. With the ordinance amendment that the Board of Supervisors approved, you know, you have the option of asking for a limited easing of the ordinance requirements or a substantial, significant easing through a conditional use permit, but the idea is that you're, you have three years, but you are to include a plan to actually vacate that property, and they have no intention of leaving. So, again, this is probably going to be a request that we're going to have to try to work through and with them to see if this is a candidate for rezone.
Now, are they already out, they're not in compliance now? Okay.
No.
They are not?
No.
So, okay, so they're already are needing to do something?
Right, yeah, and part of the ordinance, one of the amendments, one of the provisions indicates that they're supposed to be in compliance for a year. So, and I think that's why they're, you know, we're going to probably have a discussion about a rezone. And then Weezer Weiss on 190th, we met with that business owner, property owner, and he is very motivated to move to Ames, and he's got more employees than he's permitted under the home business regulations, operating out of more than one unit building. But again, he would like to leave, so he's interested in the substantial change to the ordinance, but that involves a conditional use permit, so we're going to be working with him on that.
Okay, thank you.
And then priorities for work program. We're very close on most of these things, construction, demolition. We've got, thanks to a tip from our, one of our recent Planning and Zoning Commission members, we've been talking to some of the landowners who have agreements to store the stofa materials, and we've had some dialogue with two or three of those property owners, which I think it's been pretty promising. And then in talking to Keith Morgan, he gave a suggestion to reach out to cities, and so we sent a letter to the mayors just to see if there's interest in talking to the county about, you know, working on sharing some space, possibly if they have some space, and I've already, we've already had a call and expressed interest, which is good, and then there's an emergency management commission meeting on the 17th, which I plan to attend and explain that a little better. So, again, we're approaching spring and weather, and so it's, I always stress about this, about this time of year, not having land available to process debris. Go ahead.
I just wanted, you said you're close on these. Are we looking at next month or so?
Yeah, probably May, June for most of it. Stormwater ordinance we've been working on for probably about a year now. It's had a lot of different revisions. We've, most recently, sat down with internal departments, and they provided some great feedback, and we think we're ready to reach out again to the different participants, environmental groups, builders, developers, and have them all in the same room. We'd like to do probably a session during the day and then, and one at night before taking it to the Planning and Zoning Commission in May, and then ultimately to the board.
In having that one more pre-session before it goes to planning and zoning, what would be the expectation that would come out of that one last, getting all the stakeholders together before taking it officially to P&amp;Z, where they could weigh in anyway?
Well, there's just been a lot of different amendments to it along the way, and we want to make sure that everybody sees the final version before we, before we go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for hopefully support at a public hearing to address any concerns or comments before we actually have that public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Before you go on, I just want to make sure that you're working closely with Ethan on number seven. So, this is, this is a huge can of worms, huge issue, huge can of worms, and I think we would be remiss if Ethan wasn't involved in that one every step of the way.
We definitely will. We, Brian and our previous interns started doing a lot of the record polling. This is a huge project, Rick, you're right. We're trying to figure out of all the subdivisions that were approved, which subdivisions have roads that were publicly dedicated for public use, and then two, we're to capture what's going on with signage in all of these, and so I was thinking that our new intern would take it home and finish up, but we definitely will.
So, we're tugging on a thread, and not that the thread doesn't need to come off, but we're tugging on a thread, and I, we just need to be careful.
And then we're doing a complete comprehensive review of the land development regulations. We started that about a month ago with staff. We were also to look at regulations that were adopted prior to 85, to look at regulations that were obsolete, ineffective, unenforceable. That's a part of that, and so we're targeting August to get that completed.
Do you know of any like entities to county government that have an automatic sunset, where, not that, not that an ordinance can't continue or a rule or regulation can't continue, but that it automatically has to come back for consideration? It just seems to me that when we get 30 and 40 years removed from something, if it's worth continuing, it's worth talking about why we're going to continue. And so, there's two ways to handle that. There is put on the work program that you guys are going to go back through everything, or we move to a system where things automatically sunset unless a current board takes action to continue. And, and so the question I'm asking, and not for immediate answer, but just something that I'd, I'd have interest in is, are there other entities that do it with a sunset on these things, where when you first pass something, you know how long it's going to be enforced unless a future board or commission takes it up?
I like the thought of us not having all obsolete, archaic, all right? Ordinance is just stay on the books forever and ever. It really has to do with the management system. If we do something like what you're thinking about, if I understand it, is, you know, it is sunsets at 15 years unless...
Well, and I don't know that it's 15 years, and I, I'm just throwing something out there that right now, our ordinance is unless they're specifically designated to have an endpoint, or a board takes it up actually ending it, they just live forever.
Yep, and then you make the little clips or the little radio things about, you know, we still have an ordinance on the book, spitting or something like that, yeah.
Do you have any examples where this caused problems recently?
Not off, I mean, not off the top of my head. I'm just looking at it, but I think we could come up with multiple where we've had conflicting ordinances, one passed many years ago, one passed recently, where we, where we, there's, so we did the full ordinance codification a couple of years ago, and I think we tried to take care of a lot of this at that point, but it just seems to me that there might be a better way to do this as we pass ordinances, and I just think it's worth us at least talking about at some point.
I can think of one. Going back, I think in 2017, we talked about this, about, there seemed to be some conflicting ordinances about, related to livestock on acreages, and it had to do with an animal control situation that we were involved in and horses. I'm looking out, thinking if Ethan or Deb might remember this, but there was a question about how many horses could be on an acreage, and, and with animal control, it came through as an animal control concern complaint. And then we discovered that there seemed to be one part of an ordinance passed 20, 25 years ago that allowed the owner to keep more horses, but then you went back even further, and there was a separate ordinance about what was constituted the maximum livestock on an acreage. And I'm sorry, I can't remind how anymore. I see Ethan kind of, yeah, shaking his head too. I don't want to say the name, you know, of the situation, but I remember that Deb had gone through and found this other ordinance even, and there was some question about it. So, there are some out there.
Well, here's the reason I brought it up. It's whether it's a question of every single ordinance has to sunset, or whether a new ordinance, whenever a new ordinance is proposed, that there be a very thorough review to make sure there isn't a conflict. If you're talking about something that the most recent ordinance was 1925, you know, we're not, going forward, we're not going to change that, but I'm more interested in just the administrative process to make sure that whenever an ordinance is proposed, that there's a thorough review, and I know something can always, you know, be omitted, but that seems like a more efficient way to me.
Right, and sometimes state law changes or court cases will prompt you to review your ordinances, and it's just a good idea to look at them at least once every five years, you know, but... you know, but the external factors prompt the review of, you know, whether or not they're still valid.
So, would a, a scheduled staff review maybe be more efficient than having them sunsetting at all these staggering times? Just a question. Maybe you could bring a recommendation to us.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what we're doing now. We're doing a internal review, and at some point we'll reach out to the rest of the departments to have them see what we're proposing for, for amendments, and then before we go to the county attorney's office for a review.
And also, Linda, we now contract with an ongoing codification company that handles it, and Alyssa could tell you more about this, but this last codification period, we actually contracted with, and Alyssa was in charge of that project, so she could give you more information about what they deliver for us exactly and how it works.
I'll check with you later, Alyssa. Thank you.
Thanks.
And then Lisa, land evaluation site assessment. We went to the Planning and Zoning Commission a few times on this. Believe it or not, this system has been in place for almost 35 years, and it's amazing the amount of work that went into it in the mid-'80s to just get to the system that we have. They spent three years studying it and, you know, making sure that it's, you know, a solid system. And so, we're not recommending that it be, you know, a major overhaul to some minor adjustments, adding some definitions so that everyone who's reviewing a request is using the same criteria. We wanna work on transparency, getting the application, getting the form that we use. And these are suggestions, some of the suggestions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, just getting the information out on the website so that everybody knows what's involved in the review. And so, we're planning on getting this to the Board of Supervisors very soon, but again, we're not proposing that it be a major overhaul. We, I think the best thing about it is, it's been in effect for so long, most property owners, people who are interested in acquiring property, know that they are to contact us, and it's awesome because we have this dialogue going about, you know, we learn about what they're proposing to do, what their projects are, and it's an opportunity for us to share with them what the, you know, what the regulations are, zoning and whatnot. So it's been a pretty positive experience, and in return, I think we deliver a pretty decent document that addresses, you know, what the responses are and what the options are to accomplish what they're proposing. Last thing is the census. This will be the final step. There is a meeting this Friday, I think, for about an hour, a representative from the US Census is, would like to come and, and talk about the last steps, and I think, you know, what the field workers will do, and, you know, how that will affect the county. So Emily actually took this on as a project, so it'll probably shift to Amelia as we finish this out, but again, we have a meeting on Friday to talk about it. And with that, as you know, Emily's last day is the 12th. We're gonna miss her. She's done really good work here, and, but we're happy for her as she takes on her new position in Germantown, Wisconsin, an area that she is from. So, we're happy for her. We did post the position. We've been working with HR and Noel in getting that accomplished, and we're taking applications through the 14th. And we did hire an intern whose name is Gabriel Nelson. He's an Iowa State grad in community and regional planning, and he starts May 20th. Be happy to answer your questions.
I'm good, thank you. It was very thorough, very informative.
Good job, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
We now come to upcoming agenda items. I have nothing that I know for certain since I gave kind of a list last week. Supervisor Sanders?
Yeah, so just underscoring last week, Storycom will be here before us on the 23rd. They're also going to the Ames City Council the night of the 23rd, and they're coming to the Emergency Management Commission on the 17th. We're looking for a, we're hoping we get to the end of contract negotiations by the 1st of May, and a lot, still some moving pieces, but I think we're to the point that we can give some solidity in what things are gonna look like going forward, if not the specifics of exactly what the tower fees are gonna be and things like that. But I think it's gonna be a timely report. I appreciate you putting it the top. They, the work group actually has their weekly meeting on Tuesday mornings at 10:00 a.m., but they've agreed to postpone until we finish with them and then go downstairs to the assessor's conference room for their meeting.
Great. Okay, Supervisor Merkin?
I have nothing.
Okay. And we'll go to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda or anything else you'd like to talk about. I don't see anyone rising or looking up here, so we will move on to lay in on assignments, committee meetings, et cetera. Supervisor Merkin?
Continuing to attend the meetings, the CICS staff are having with service providers regarding the access centers that are going to be required for mental health, development on disabilities. A very interesting conversation, some things to let you know about, so.
Once again, Supervisor Sanders?
Nope, pass.
Okay. I attended the first quarterly meeting of the Nevada Economic Development Council to provide an update to them. The topics of interest were the budget that we've just passed, the vote we took on the Healthy Life Center, and the question that came was, related to that, the main one was, does that mean Nevada's going to get help with its rec center, and will Nevada, Story City and Huxley specifically get subsidy help? And what my response was is, at least the previous board had expected at some point that there would be a request coming before us for the Nevada rec center, but that doesn't mean any money's coming. It's just that I think we kind of expect at some point to be approached about a discussion, and as far as the three subsidies, I advised the city manager that they were welcome to come and have that discussion, but once again, there was no promise. There also was some questions just in general about how it might impact the budget going forward, and I assured them that now with these new numbers from the auditors and the fact that I was off by one year in the count, I felt more comfortable that there was money left over every year for projects out in the rest of the county, which is all I could pretty much assure them at that point, okay? So, they also afterwards, someone made a suggestion to me that like previous two supervisors who no longer sit on the board, but they were going weekly to Nevada Rotary to give a report weekly, and I don't, I, my schedule cannot accommodate that. I also think a little bit about fairness going forward to their other service clubs throughout the county, but certainly open to sharing duties if we wanted to start to set up with service clubs and other groups who wanted us to present. I would recommend quarterly, just because of time when you add in all of the different service organizations, but I wanna pass that on as for something just to brainstorm about at this point. It's not, you know, anything formal on the agenda, just there was a request and suggestion if the, if we could try to implement some kind of more regular update, 'cause actually how I brought it up was I asked them about how they got their news about Storycom, because we've been discussing about our story, you know, in the past there've been discussions about radio, et cetera. So I said, "So how do you get your news?" And that was the response from this particular group. We go to Rotary, we used to go to Rotary.
So is this the group that meets at 6:00 a.m.?
No, that's...
That's the Kiwanis.
Kiwanis, that's, that's, yeah. A different service group that'll go.
Noon on Wednesdays. Marty and I both used to be members. I don't know if Marty maintained his membership. It just became too problematic for me to get there regularly on noon Wednesdays, so...
They said Marty was, you know, Marty did it a lot, before that Wayne did, and I...
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Give me the contact information, I'll get ahold of somebody.
Lynn Scarlett, actually.
Oh, good.
She's their membership chair, I believe, so. And then as far as others, you know, ones, as we can pick them up, let's let each other know, I can, I can pick up a couple of the Kiwanis ones on a regular basis, but I just want to be very sure that we are inclusive of any group that would want us to come on a regular basis. Whatever regular is, is what we can accommodate, so. All right, so that was, those were a couple of the discussion highlights from there. The next thing is that this week, late last week, I can't remember when it was, we discussed the public room audio visual situation here related to the audio. Was it Friday? Maybe, okay, thank you. And I'm happy to report that a plan was formed going forward to do some testing of possibly different audio configurations. There was an exchange of information. Deb was there, Alyssa was there, Shelley was there, and I was there. We really wanted to discuss how we could try and get the audio part as, as perfect as we can given the different parameters, so please be assured, we're still working on trying to get the system fine-tuned. I would like to remind the two supervisors that to please check in with Darla about going over Story Kenworthy and sitting to try out new chairs. That actually had been mentioned to me a while ago, but it's been, it came on my radar so, since we rejected the first chair that came out, so it's just a housekeeping item. And also, that the applications for the VA Commission are due, I believe, Thursday, and I was, I'm shooting to put it on the agenda for April 23rd. If, that is a problem, I know we're all very busy, but if you wanna interview any of the people, April 23rd is when I'm planning on bringing my nominations forward. And with that, if there's nothing else, then I'm gonna invite Ethan Anderson up.
Good morning.
Last agenda item here, I'd like to request we go into closed session, percent dial code 21.51C to discuss matters with the council where litigation is imminent or ongoing, and disclosure of the legal strategy would disadvantage us.
Right.
I move that we go into closed session.
Okay. Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Are we meeting back in the conference room then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we are in open session now, and we have no further business on the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn as that there was nothing that came out of the closed session today?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Sorry.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Okay.